Good morning. I'd like to remind everyone to please be sure our cell phones are turned to the off, or vibrate position and our meeting is streamlined on Facebook Live since we're still limited to the number of people who can be present in the council chamber. Also, please be advised, a meeting can be viewed later on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube. This meeting of the Gaston City Council is called to order and the chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Worthy.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
And Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Heath Williamson to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the blessings to come and handle the business in front of us, Father. We always pray your blessings on us, Father. We pray that we bless and honor you with every decision that's made, with every action that's taken. Father, we trust in you. Father, we trust in your sovereignty, even though we don't know the end of things or how far things will go in any situation. Your throne is still there and you're sitting on it forever, Father. We do trust in you and in that. We give you all the thanks and all the glory for what's about to be done. Use this as you see fit. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time on the agenda, it is scheduled for the EMA Director, Ms. Gaither, to come and provide an update, but she's not here today. And so she sent me some information to give out to everyone. There is a Carver drive-through walk-up, which will be Wednesday. This is May the 13th, from 10:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. And this will be the COVID-19 drive-through testing, and it's at the Carver Community Center, 10:30 Tuscaloosa Avenue in Gaston. And this is going to be done by the Health Department and has some criterias that you have to meet. No symptoms and in high risk group. These are the criterias that you have to meet that you can be tested. So that means that, you know, if you're in a high-risk group, or you have, if there's fever or shortness of breath, and the patient is uncompromised, has a carbitis, or the patient is age 65 or older, or the patient is a healthcare worker, or the patient is associated with a long-term healthcare facilities, these are the ones that can be tested. Please bring calmness and be patient, because this is trying times for us all. Then there will be another testing, which will be every Tuesday and Thursday, from 8:30 until 10:30 by appointment only, and this will be at the Health Department. Ms. Gaither continuously to ask all citizens to proceed with caution. Safety is your responsibility. Social distancing, washing hands often, sanitized when you cannot wash your hands. And she definitely says, do not touch your face, especially near your eyes, or near your nose. What she's doing is continuously following what the governor has said. Safer at home, if you can stay at home, that would be one of the best options. But please, social distance, wash your hands. Safety is your responsibility. And that's what she gave for the update for coming. There's other things, I think that, and I don't want to totally speak, I think there, as far as the county is concerned, in the testing, I think their testing went up some in the county. I think when I talked to her yesterday evening, it was 21, had gone up. So we need to continuously, we still have people that, you know, we need to continuously to educate everyone. If you don't want a mask, like wear a mask like me, most of the time, stay at home. But if you go out, do all the precautions that you're supposed to do. Social distance yourself. It's not the city's responsibility, and it's definitely not the city council's person's responsibility for you to stay safe. It's your responsibility. So as much as you can, I know we're opening up. I was one of the ones, she may not have gotten my email, but I emailed the governor and told her that, you know, maybe we need to stay in a little bit longer, but I'm quite sure that the economy is affecting a lot of decisions that's being made. But I'm asking you all to please be safe by social distancing, washing your hands, and just using plain common sense. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of a work session and council meeting that was held May 5th.
So move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments on accounts for the week of May 1st through the 7th.
So move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Unfinished business, we have none today. Our resolution today is authorizing an application and acceptance of the federal assistance to the firefighters grant for COVID-19. And this is a grant for supplies such as masks, gowns, and eye protection for the fire department. The amount is $13,260 with a 10% match to be paid out of the fire tax. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move.
Second.
If there are any discussion.
Council President, I just want to make a general comment. Chief Carroll, thank you. I appreciate all your hard work and everything you bring to the table, and I'm so glad you're on our team and not playing for somebody else. So I appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you, sir.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, there's no new business, and we have some committee reports.
Do you want me to speak?
Yes. At this time, I asked Chief Carroll to come, and I had asked Chief Carroll to come when we were talking about the CBG funds and how the money would be dispensed. But I'd just like for the general public to know the expense and also the time that the fireman has to endure when he goes to answer a call. And I'm specifically asking, say, the equipment that he has to have on, and then a price tag for that, because not one fireman goes to the residence, but there's more than one. So the general public needs to know how much money is stepping up on their porch when they come to their house, okay?
Well, this is sort of off the cuff, but I'll give you the best explanation I can. During this COVID-19 epidemic, we had to modify a lot of things we did in the fire service. One, because we didn't have enough PPE to handle calls like we did on a normal basis. We make somewhere close to about 180 calls a week. 70% of those calls are EMS, meaning that close to about 80 or 90 calls a week, somewhere around that, is EMS-related. During this COVID-19, we have seen 85 PUI cases. Now, PUI was a person under investigation that exhibited the symptoms of a COVID-19 patient. But we also discovered that during the initial dispatch, that all patients were not being upfront with their symptoms, and we found out on early stages that we were approaching patients that did have symptoms of COVID-19 that did not indicate that upfront. So we had to again modify our EMS response protocols in order to say that on every EMS call you made, whether it be a wreck or any other event, that you are in your proper personal protective equipment before approaching that patient. So for conservative measures, we only allowed one individual to approach the patient until it was determined he needed additional help inside, based on the condition of the patient. And then other individuals, we will respond to a typical event, five people to that event, an engine company and a rescue unit to that event. That's under our Phase 1. We went into this operation with three different phases that we would operate in. Phase 1 was to do normal responses with some modifications. Phase 2 would actually put in a unit to stand alone to make nothing but PUI calls. We never met the volume that we felt like that Phase 2 truck could be put in place. PPE in regards to COVID-19 consists of eye protection. Typically, there's two pieces of protection nowadays. It's not only a safety goggles, but also a shield to put on, a full-body covering, whether that be Tyvek suits, that's typically what we are using, and not the standard gowns, some of the gowns that we got through isolation suits. You could see through them, and they weren't very protective at all. So we stayed maintained with our Tyvek suits, and we also had some what we call cover-all suits, which is more of a Class B hazardous material suit, that we had several thousand on hand for our hazardous material team. But a basic PPE for that one individual going into a COVID-19 patient consists of the eye protection, the full-body suit, footy covers, gloves, and a mask. And that ensemble would cost you between $25 and $30 apiece per individual, per call. And as I said, we are, and I will say this, that our call volume for EMS did come down some during the COVID-19. You would think the hysteria would have made that thing run up. But we found out those nuisance calls that we were getting for EMS calls were stone toes and all the rest of them, didn't want to go to the hospital, not at that particular point in time. So we helped us out a little bit in those calls, but it's still, when you consider that each week we're making at least 66 or somewhere around calls, EMS calls, and at least one person, and typically up to five people, and I got breakdown. We keep statistics every day about how many patients we see that has the COVID-19 symptoms. I'll send that report on to Frankie once a day, and we'll get three days a week, we'll get reports from the hospital about what they are seeing and different things. But we're monitoring that and trying to see if the trend, where the trend is. You're going to see a little bit of a spike right now because of the additional testing that you see. Don't mean that we have more cases, just mean we discovered more cases. They've been here and have been here for a while. And I want to commend the citizens of Gaston, though, because of the 64 known addresses I have, and in those addresses, there's multiple patients, very few of them call 911. They are doing the protocols as addressed by the Alabama Department of Public Health and all of the thing about, call your personal doctor, stay at home. If you've got to go to the hospital, they're going by private auto, most of them are not calling us. We've had a handful, and when they call us, it's usually somebody that's got to be at the hospital on the ventilator by that time. So I want to commend them for doing that. But nevertheless, we're still seeing those patients out here. And if you see us walk up on a wreck and we're in full protective gear, that's the same reason. We don't know whether they're going to the hospital because they got COVID-19 and they got involved in a wreck. We don't know that. So that's how come we're using so much PPE, but even at the same time, we're trying to conserve that by limiting to the number of people that approaches that patient initially.
Okay. Anybody else?
I have a question. When you ordering your PPE, are you doing it in conjunction with the police department and EMA so you can get a lower rate, or y'all each one ordering it separately?
Many purchases we get, because sometimes I've got, since I buy PPE on a regular basis, I have some better contacts than some of the other do, because they don't typically buy this. And so we worked in conjunction with the police department when we were working for masks and some other things. We'll buy things on the same PO and cost share that PO. EMA has supplied us with some equipment and everything. We've ordered some stuff through them, because we knew they were ordering certain items in bulk, and we would order some of that. But sometimes I could get masks from a vendor that might send me bad masks, because I ordered all through the year. It's just not because of an epidemic that comes up. That's, you know, I'm their business all through the year. So they'll send me some stuff from time to time, if they have it in place. The problem is, none of them are having it in place, especially the 3M type mask. Now, the KIA 95 masks are flooding the market, and those are the Chinese-made masks that you'll see coming out. They look sort of like, I reflect them to look like the little duck, paper duck things you used to make with your hands back in the day. That's what they look like, and they're a flat mask. But they are CDC-approved to be worn during the COVID-19 stuff. But we've also had some people that have given us some PPE. The Alabama Forest Street Commission came up with some PPE, which were not N95-type masks, they were more food-grade type masks to be used in the food industry and stuff like that. And we did share some of that that was donated to us with the hospitals, because they gave us 4,000 of those masks. And those masks are typically used on the patient, because when we go into an environment where the first thing we're going to do is put a mask on the patient. And that just helps, cuts down the exposure that any of my people have, based on the COVID-19, because if it cover the patient's mouth, then that reduces our exposure, so.
Okay.
Chief, could you, two things. Could you outline, I think with this virus, there's a different protocol for once you have a patient and it's taken care of, and then you have to disrobe and take off the PPE. And then how are, and for the safety of our firemen and medics, what, how are we testing these people to make sure they don't have the virus?
All right. We've done a couple of different things. Number one, we were serious, we were dead serious about what, that you followed our protocols, the way we put it out there, because it was for your safety. We had two individuals that had a lack of judgment or wasn't thinking at the present time, and we put them in isolation when they did, simply because we were telling them, we're serious about how you go about operating when you're out at these scenes, and when you, if you get contaminated, or you have the subject to be contaminated, we will isolate you. When you come out of a building, we consider everything you have on contaminated. So we decon all of that by certain methods of what to take off first, how to take your gloves off without coming in contact with each other, how to take your suit off. And once you get it all off, it goes in a red bag that goes to the hospital and gets disposed of. So all of that stuff is gone. It don't come back to the fire station with me, it goes to the hospital in a red bag. In the two instances we had, one came out, did everything perfect like you were supposed to, took all his stuff off, and a little boy was on the porch crying about his daddy going to the hospital where he's going. He walks up and goes back in the house to give him the address of where they was taking his daddy. Well, he was quarantined for 14 days for going back in the contaminated environment. Another was taken off his gear, he wipes his brow with his contaminated hand when he gets out. He goes in isolation. So we're trying to enforce the idea that this is for your sake, and we want to make sure that that happens. Now, as far as testing, we were provided with, through EMA, we were going to purchase the test, but EMA purchased the rapid test that comes out to test antibodies. It's not a, it's not a true test to actually determine if you have COVID or not. It could actually tell you whether or not you were exposed to it by showing an antibody. The problem with antibody testing is the antibodies don't necessarily show up within the first two or three days that you have COVID-19. It could be up to seven days before the antibody shows up on a patient. But we gave every, it was on a voluntary basis, but everybody but two in the department took the test. And we only had one individual show up that had any signs that he had had, he showed up for one of the two antibodies for COVID-19. But he was asymptomatic and never showed, ever showed any symptoms of COVID-19. So we tried to get that test out there. Perhaps a quick test, we did it ourselves, did it through our medic supervisor, went around and tested every individual. And it was a finger prick, and with a reagent, agent to actually put in on top of that, and it'd tell you within 10 minutes whether you was had an antibody and everything, so.
Well, thank you. I think I can speak for everybody up here. We're all concerned about our first responders and want to make sure that it's reassuring to hear the steps that are in place. It doesn't surprise me. It's just, it's good to know that y'all are on the ball, and we're praying that you stay as clean as you are now.
We appreciate it. We've been, we must be doing something good. We haven't had anyone in the department, or their family members that I am aware of, because I call and ask every week or two, how well their families are doing, how they are doing and everything, and we have not had a patient or anyone showing the signs of COVID-19. So that's a good thing.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Beck, since you're the last, do you have any announcement for your?
For my district?
We'd like to announce that Wednesday at First Baptist Church at 2:00, we're handing out our backpacks. It's open to anybody in Gaston or Etowah County. Last Wednesday, we, since we're an agency with the Community Food Bank of Central Alabama, we were the recipient of little over 3,000 pounds of food, groceries that we gave away. And it was, we probably could have gave away 9,000 pounds. We had never done that before. We didn't really know what to expect, but it was a big success. A lot of families got a lot of food. We're hoping to get to do that again in a week. We'll find out from the food bank probably this week if they're going to have enough food to resupply that. So Wednesday, tomorrow at 2:00 at First Baptist, we'll be handing out backpacks that we normally would give out at Stripling Elementary School. The other thing I just want to say, it's just kind of to echo what we're all saying, is that, you know, this whole thing began, the shutdown, I guess you would call it, was due to health reasons and health concerns and health safety. We're now seeing a partial reopening of our city, county, state, and country due to economic reasons. Nothing has changed on the health side. There's still no cure for this virus. There's still no vaccine. So it's still there. So don't be confused by a reopening due to economic reasons that the virus has disappeared. So we still need to be careful. We need to wash your hands. We need to have sanitizer lotion available. We need to wear masks when we're around people. Just be smart. We still can't live in fear for the rest of our lives, but we also don't need to forget the protocols that have been recommended by people that we need to adhere to. So I urge people to get out and get back into society, but do so in a responsible way that you don't cause yourself or others harm. You know, there's no playbook for this. We're making this up as we go, and what we don't want to see is too much of a response, and then we have to go all the way back and start over. So just urge everybody to kind of keep that in mind and just to be aware of what you're doing and to adhere to the protocols. Thank you.
Councilwoman Reed.
I don't have anything except to thank Mr. Wilson. I was running slow on hand sanitizer, and he gave me a whole bottle of it. I'm in good shape with all this shelter down. Just encourage everybody to do the same thing. Thank you.
Councilwoman, will you?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll echo that, Ben. Thank you, Jason, for, or Councilman Wilson, for providing it, and I think you're, you know, I think you've pivoted appropriately in terms of your business model, and I think it fills a gap, fills a void in the business community, for sure.
Thank you.
So we appreciate that. You know, just to provide just a few statistics in terms of where we are as a county right now, we have 193 confirmed cases and 10 confirmed deaths, I think, at this point, and 2,721 people as of this morning have been tested. So that's, you know, again, just in the absence of Deborah this morning, I wanted to make sure that we gave some idea of where we are and where we're trending. And I think I couldn't have said it any better, Councilwoman Beck. We're not out of the woods yet, so please remember that as much as we have the right to hold government responsible for being strategic in terms of how we manage a plan, we all have a personal responsibility to ensure our own personal safety. And that doesn't exclude anybody sitting here. So please be smart as you're going out to the grocery stores, as you're going out to businesses. Be smart, and don't ignore the social distancing guidelines. Those aren't, those aren't guidelines that are just made up by some uneducated and uninformed individual. Those guidelines were put in place by the CDC and our public health authorities, who are taking the lead on whatever our strategy is as it relates to this. So please keep that in mind. I can't say enough positive things about our first responders. We've talked a lot this morning because of Chief Carroll's presentation about our fireman, but let's not forget our police officers as well, who are out there doing a couple things. They're responding, they're keeping us safe in the midst of this, and they're also exercising some very responsible and mature enforcement of these ever-evolving rules and orders and guidelines. So again, let's be mindful of that and what they do in putting their lives on the line every day. Thank you, community. Thank you, City of Gaston. Thanks to everybody for keeping at a minimum the influence of fanatics. That was the biggest fear that I had, or one of the biggest fears that I had going into this, that fanatics would just run rampant. And I think reasonable minds have really taken hold of this, and we're really moving forward in spite of the fanatics. And of course, you know, the non-public health professionals who want to step up and take the lead. This is not a time for people to be overly opinionated. We need good data and good scientific guidance. And so I appreciate the mayor's office and this council for continuing to drive in that direction. I think that's important. And the last thing I'll say is that it's important at this juncture, much of what you've heard today regarding grant monies that we've received and monies that we hope to receive in the future are coming from competitive scenarios. You know, whether we want to admit it or not, cities are having to compete for a number of the stimulus dollars that are out there. And so with that being said, we need our local, our state local legislative delegation to be smart in this season and not get crossways with the governor's office in any respect. We need to be in a position to be able to actively compete. If that money ends up at the governor's office, then we need to be in a very competitive position to be able to compete for those grant monies. So again, we all have a role in this. We all have a role in ensuring that we're in the best possible political position to ensure our piece of the pie is going to be an overtly competitive scenario, and let's do everything we can to make sure that Gaston shines and is in a good position to receive our portion of it. That's all I have. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilwoman Worthy?
Yes, Madam President. I won't reiterate what the other council people have said, but please, just because they opening up the government and these cities are opening up, like the councilman said, this virus is not gone. So please, if you have to go out, wear gloves, wear a mask, and sanitize your hands. I also want to give kudos to the engineer there. We had a sinkhole deformed in a couple yards from pipe the city put in over 50 years ago. And I went out, the elderly gentleman called me, and I went out and took pictures, and when I sent them in to Heath, they got right on it. They went out that morning, the next morning, and they work in the situation. Have you got the easements yet, or they started working yet? Could you tell us anything?
They were marking them this morning. Actually, several folks in my department were headed out that way, so it's progressing, could be starting to progress now.
Thank you so much. And I want to reiterate what the president said about the testing site would be at Carver Community Center tomorrow, Wednesday, May the 13th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And I want to reiterate what the president said about the testing site would be at Carver Community Center tomorrow, Wednesday, May the 13th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. It's not only drive up, drive through, but it's walk up also. You can walk up and get a test, you know? All you got to have is a cough. Just say you got a cough and you can get tested. And then we, we trying to get more people tested. So, we're going to feed the first 200 people to come through because at the other two testing sites, I think we only had like 126 people to come to the one in Rainbow City, they had a 12th Street Baptist Church and the one at the Methodist Church over in East Gaston. It's like 126 people showed up. So, we want more people to come. And I'm going to put out flyers this evening. So, I want to thank Ed Jones, East Coast Barbecue. They gonna do a sack lunch. You can get it after you take your test and get it and go, go on back to your home. So, and then grass cutting. Are we getting anywhere? The attorney back there, are we getting anywhere on what we talked about? Do we need to talk offline about the nuisance lots?
Uh, no. I told you it probably would work.
All right. Thank you. That's it. Everybody be safe.
Councilman Wilson.
Yes, ma'am. I just want to encourage everybody to continue to fill out your census. You can fill that census out online. You can mail it in. There's also an app you can download. Takes about four minutes. We did see some improvement in District Five over last week. Maybe I got a little too, too vocal with my, with my criticism of you guys, but it worked. And so, our numbers are up, but we're still consistently lower than everybody else in the city and lower than the county and the state average in every single track in District Five. So, please take time to fill those censuses out. The other thing I'll ask to the officer, the mayor and to Ms. Rosser, as we work through some of these CDVG funds or some of this grant funding, these competitive grants that we're working for, please keep the recycling center in the back of your mind on that. I'm already seeing immediate impacts from not having those trailers. There's a bunch of cardboard piling up over there. And I know for restaurants and businesses that go through a ton of cardboard, that's a big deal. So, if we can get the, the cardboard recycling center reopened soon, that'd be a great relief. But that was something that was specifically directed to me. And then the last thing is I'd ask that the officer, the mayor and K-More and the city attorney maybe try to have a quick phone call to see if there's anything we can do to facilitate some sort of a Friday night or Saturday night relaxation of the entertainment district or blocking of the street to allow these restaurants an opportunity to make a little more money during this critical next couple of weeks as these things are rolled back. Hopefully, it'll help them stay, stay alive until we can all come back out safely. And I think it'd be a great gesture on the part of the city if we could do something like that. And finally, social distancing in general. I know a lot of you guys are going back out there and I was out yesterday. I went by two or three restaurants just to kind of get a feel of the community. And I get it. I'm, I, I know this is personal choice for a lot of people when we talk about freedoms, but almost nobody was wearing a mask. There was almost no observation of social distancing in a couple of those places after 5:00 yesterday. And, and again, I just want to say what everybody else has said. I'll take my turn on this dead horse. But please realize that this thing getting over and the worst thing that can happen is for us to pull up short. You know, we've gone through all this to finally get to this point. And here we are right, right next to the finish line and I'd hate to have to hit the reset button and us go through this again. You know, the, it's kind of like how your doctor tells you to take all those antibiotics, you know? Even after you feeling better, you still need to take those last three or four days worth of pills. So, everybody just hold your nose and let's swallow these last, last little bit of antibiotics and we can move on with our lives. Thank you, Madam President.
All right. Count, Mayor, you have an announcement and then, then Councilman Cannon, but you have an announcement for us.
I've got one comment. I know the Facebook battle last week. It's seven council meetings in a row. I'm always here for council meetings. I know what goes on the day before because we go through everything we're going to do. A lot of mornings I'm up in my office with people up there meeting with them about stuff. And I don't get to vote on the council stuff. So, sometime I might thank you, but I'm still in the building doing work.
About, did you have the announcement about Goodyear?
The mayor received this week final notification of the flood on Goodyear. That's the first communication that we've had in, by June 28th and everything to be. And that's about as simple as I can put it. But that's the only official communication that the city has had. It's under the Warren Act. It's required. And there's 526 people affected at this time. And that's pretty much it. And we don't know their plans for the property as of this time, but we'll see going forward.
So, Goodyear will be officially closed, so that it will be officially closed June the 28th, 2020. And it'll affect about 520 people this, this last, this last round of people. And so that the citizens of Gaston will know that this is our first official announcement that came directly from Goodyear. Yes, Mayor?
I did want to say that a few years ago, when it looked like we were going down, we kept it up for twice and so six. We started working on trying to get other kind of jobs in here in the Honda Mercedes. And all those companies started coming out about it. Going to folks who wrote that bill out. And we wanted to start DPD or things to go to work for some of these plants. And we have a big partnership with Gaston State. You go there, we help you get some money for all the technology center. And you can go there and learn how to do anything on a car. And these companies I talked to three or four of the plant managers every two or three weeks. And they're always looking for people to work. Clean, air conditioned, benefits, retirement, I think, on most of them. You know, it depends on which one you're talking to. But it's a pretty good paying job. It may not be as much as Goodyear, but it's a good job. But you do have to show up and work. And so, we got around 1,800 or a little better jobs up in these auto suppliers. And they're about cranking it up now. Yeah, they've been closed for a while, but they're about to start cranking it up. So, if you want a job, it sure would help. Go out and go down there and see some of them. Call me and I can put you in touch with any of them.
I'd like to just read the official letter. It was dated May 5th and it was given to the mayor. And it says, Dear sir, this is to inform you pursuant of to the Workers Adjustment and Retraining Notification Act that Goodyear will permanently cease active operation at its plant at 922 East Megan Boulevard, Gaston, Alabama 35903 on May the 6th, 2020. Employment separation related to this closing of active operation will begin June the 28th, 2020 or during the 14-day period thereafter. Some employees will be retained beyond that date to help wind down the operation of the plant. Additionally, some employees will have accepted transfers to other Goodyear location. A number of the affected employees are represented by the United Steelworkers who have been notified of a closing of active operation and with whom Goodyear addressed available transitional benefits and other shutdown-related matters. To the extent affected employees are not being provided with advanced notification or employment losses as may be required by the Warren, that's the Workers Adjustment and Retraining Notification Act, they will be paid all wages and other payments consistent with the act within three weeks of the closing of active operation. It is anticipated that 592 total employees will be affected. Additional information about the permanent closing of active operation is available at the plant or otherwise upon request. Then it has says, if you have any, any questions, they give a telephone number. And this is from Pat Paul Neuter, Manager, Human Resources. Councilman Cannon.
I've got probably five or six things I want to talk on. I want to try to be brief and, you know, I know time's, everybody's short on time today. Everybody that knows me know that I say what I, what I mean and I don't sugarcoat anything. Your life can change in a twinkle of an eye. I mean, tomorrow you might not even be, when we leave here today, we might be in a car wreck. We might not be here. The Public Safety Committee was talking to the fire department. Councilman Reed's the chairman of that. I think me and Council Wardney was on that and we was trying to figure out a way to do some pay restructure on it. I talked to the mayor's office. We was trying to come up with a way to build a new fire station in Walnut Park because the old fire station over there is about had it. We was all on track for all this. Then come COVID-19. We didn't know we was going to lose all this money we lost. We didn't know businesses was going to shut down, but we was on track to do all this stuff. I just want to tell y'all guys, I appreciate the firemen and the policemen, everything y'all do. We're going to just have to wait till time passes and see what's going on with this now. I guess Councilman Reed might have other ideas in his committee meeting. We're going to have to figure out what's going on before we can move further with any of this. I want to talk also about Riverfest. There's been rumors and rumors and rumors, the City of Gaston shut down Riverfest on its 30th anniversary. First of all, the City of Gaston didn't ever do Riverfest. We didn't open Riverfest, we didn't close Riverfest. The Chamber of Commerce had Riverfest, not the City of Gaston. I was at, out of the 29 of Riverfest, I was there 27 of them. I was there when the first one started. The chamber came to us and said they was going to get out of the Riverfest business. We got the name Riverfest, they gave that to us. That's all we owned. I don't know if it was not, if it wasn't profitable, the reason they closed it down. Or they had other ideas or they wanted to make more money doing other stuff. Or they wasn't getting acts people, you know, wanted to see or wanted to be at. But I do know the City of Gaston spent a lot of money on Riverfest. We had police protection there. All Riverfest had was a couple of security guards, but we did police protection there. Our fire department was there. EMS was there, ambulance drivers was there, public works was there. We spent a week before it started putting up fencing, putting down gravel, bringing out garbage cans. We had electrical inspector going down there inspecting all the warrant and the plugs and stuff that was on there. As soon as Riverfest ended on Friday night, we had probably 40 or 50 guys down there picking up paper, picking up garbage so they could reopen the next day. And we did that rotation every day. We had to do it. And the very last day, the highway had to be open at a certain time. The state closed the highway down there. We sent public works, they was down there the whole time and said how much money we spent on Riverfest. I'm not begrudging any of the money we spent, but guys, just know that the City of Gaston never put on Riverfest. It was done by the Chamber of Commerce. I want to talk a little bit about the opening and closing of businesses here. Sherman Gotten, this council has not closed any business in the City of Gaston. We can't tell any business when they can open. The governor's office does that. All the mayor can do is close the, close the facilities we have, like he closed City Hall, parks, recreation buildings. He did that. This council up here doesn't close anything. The mayor does. It's his, that's his job. He does that for the safety of the people in the City of Gaston. And the Chamber of Commerce, let me bring that up next. I can't remember what year it was, but I'm thinking, I could be wrong on the money amount, but the City of Gaston gave the Chamber of Commerce, I think, $27,000. Maybe you might correct me if I'm wrong. And one year they didn't put in for it in the budget in time and we left them out that time. I think after that, they put in for, I'm thinking $65,000. I might be off on my numbers, but as, as far as I still can remember it, I might be wrong. The chamber still owes us about $65,000. Am I wrong, Mayor? Or correct?
We own the property. They have a payment on the property.
Okay. Okay. So, that was that.
Can I say one thing on that? The former mayor, I was in the chamber and president one year, but we never got any money from the city all that time that I was in the chamber. Basically, he couldn't run it, so we didn't get the money. When we got in office, he started giving. He said, well, I think it was a year.
You can want to help people and be with people, like the Chamber of Commerce. I don't know anybody up there that's against the Chamber of Commerce myself. We've got some council members that give money to them, some that don't. You can be for somebody and not just give them money. I've always won an election by 70%. Four elections, I've always won by 70%. And less than 10 people, the whole time I've ran, each cycle I've run, has gave me money. The rest of them just supported me. You know how they supported me? Went out and talked for me, tried to help me and did all they could do. You don't have to give money to be a supporter of something to help somebody. I just want you to all remember that. Next thing is Facebook. Facebook has got carried away here in Gaston. You've got people on there talking about what the mayor's done, what the council's done. We sit around, they don't see us. I can go on and on and on. Guys, all you got to do, if you want to talk to me, is come up here, call up here and set up an appointment with the city clerk's office. We'll meet in my office up there. You can talk to me like you a dog. Talk to me like I'm a dog if you want to. I'm a big guy, about 240 pounds and that don't faze me at all if you want to talk about me. But talk about me to my face. Don't talk about me hiding behind a motorcycle, a Facebook page or a big transfer truck or a woman's picture talking about me. Come up here and talk about me, you know, between us each other. I guarantee you, I'll let you say anything you want to say in my office about me as long as when we get through, you let me pray for you. That's all I ask right there. Nothing more. I ask that. And I think if we'll all be a lot kinder to people in this city and understand where we are right now in this COVID-19 situation, this city would be a whole lot better off. Don't go around here saying they do this, they do that, they make this kind of money. Be a man. Come up to the people and tell them, say, hey, look, I'm sorry, I made a mistake. You don't know what people do all the time. Just because you say you don't see them, you don't, you know, I don't see a lot of y'all people all the time, but I know y'all working and doing what y'all can do. I'm off my soapbox and thank you, President.
Councilman Cannon, can I, can I talk, can I talk to you like a dog without the, without the?
You can.
I'm going to carry my wife to the doctor at 12:30 and y'all go talk my side, so I'll say.
The only thing I got to say, and I was going to write the governor, I was going to email the governor and told her, tell her that she reminded me of a movie by John Wayne, True Grit. But I'm going to look over here and say, we got True Grit up here.
I just call it like I see it.
Call for a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Let's go home.